2021 at 5:30.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night. We thank you that we're allowed together here together in a country that's still full of freedom. We ask that you help us to do your best in all decisions that we make. Guide us and lead us to be honest and faithful and fair. Keep us safe and keep our country safe throughout these hard times. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're going to open a public hearing. I'm now opening a public hearing of the City Council of Vernon, Florida on a matter of ordinance 21-69. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Vernon, Washington County, Florida approving the application of John Hawkins for an amendment to the future land use map and comprehensive plan of the City of Vernon, Washington County, Florida dated April 4th, 1991 as amended by changing the future land use map designation from low density residential to low medium residential for 1.78 acres of land at 3429 School Mill Road, Vernon, Florida. Partial ID number 00-4680-003. Providing for a copy on file.
No. My bill should be 129.
The bill that you called about and that you came to the meeting about had already been filled those late fees on the 15th.
It's already filled. That's what the bill come out for the 15th.
What I'm telling you is you came to the meeting to get the adjustment after it had already been filled those late fees and they would adjust it all.
No, you sent the bill before. I just got this bill. So you added $40 on there.
Now ma'am, not the way that I'm looking at what I've got running me right.
My water bill did not run $169. Let me hear my quick grandkid. We were there four days. This Sunday must have been Tuesday. You're really adding $40 to my bill? Yes, you are. You can't adjust a bill when the bill had to go. The bill just came out. Bill just came out and I put in $385 before the 15th. So I came in after the 15th to talk to you about my bill. So you adjusted the water.
Yeah, it was the, I think it was the 19th.
Yes, I mean, I'm in 19.
When you did the adjustment.
You adjusted my, that my bill. Also for this month.
What she's been trying to explain here, when I'm looking at here, that's a carrier.
It wasn't a carrier because I paid 145. That's how much you told me to pay my bill.
I think the bill was 128. You paid 130. Is that right?
Okay, you say you got, that's not right though. You say I paid to the meeting for that. I only got two bills since I've been there. Now, this one month and that bill, it was $385. I came to the meeting. You can't adjust the bill with, I came to the meeting or you already adjusted it.
No ma'am, that's not what we're saying.
It's, I'm not just saying that. You added $40 if you added 40 on that bill. You added 45 for the next month bill.
No ma'am, according to what I'm looking at here, and I don't do the bills.
Because they'll type up something different because I got my bill right here.
Okay, Miss Lynn, I'm, you know, I understand that you're upset. I'm not going to argue with you. I'm trying to explain what I'm looking at.
I'll do the chiplet. I do 93.510, okay? My bill never run over $80. Never. And that's not, that's way, that's double time water I use on Vernon. Vernon, I use 16,400. Chiplet, I use 93.510. Okay? Their water bill is $78.
Well.
And you didn't adjust the $40 on 169. Because I only got two bills there. One bill for $385. So how you, you adjusted my water. You didn't adjust no $40. She added $40 for this month bill. That was last month bill. But this is my second bill right here. See that? One of the first bill was $35. The second bill, $385, okay? So how you adjust that, that much? You adjusted my water. You adjusted my water and stuff. 139, 204, and that's a 37 late fee.
Miss Lynn, the bill history that I'm looking at, where you paid the $130, I can readjust it down from the 385 that it was originally. Shows that the water was adjusted, sales tax was adjusted, sure was adjusted.
So you all, I'll be adjusting 140 for this bill right here. I'll tell you what, I cut my water off out there. Okay?
We're just going to tamper with the meter.
That's not tampering. If I was tampering with it, you would have put a lock in because I would have asked a lot of folks about that. If I was tampering with it, you would have put a lock on it and I would have took the hammer off.
I haven't said to have. I said, I was just telling.
That's what she said. I tampered with the water because I cut it out.
She turned the meter off and put a lock on the meter.
I did. Because I told y'all last time, I said I'm going to cut my water because I found a bill of drop lock out there from somewhere in Alabama. I don't know who it was. I turned my meter off and locked it so nobody could go out and turn it on. There ain't nothing on yet.
Against the law.
If you were to put a lock on it and I would have knocked it off, that would have been tampered with.
But it is a property. So you put.
It's on my watch. I set the lock off right there. But listen. You guys is charging too much for people in this little town. We only got less than 800 people. That water bill shouldn't be that high when I'm out there. Not the 169. You keep telling me about a leak. There ain't no leak out there.
I think when we talked to you about this last time and we did the adjustment, we said if there was an issue with it again, that you would have to.
There ain't no issue with that water because I'm not there.
Okay, well, I'm not there to see what's going with it either, Miss Lynn. I'm just telling you that if you're having an issue with.
I'm not having a water rate. I paid you that 139, but next month, my bill should be $40. That's all it should be next month because I'm not there.
Okay, well, like I said, if you're having an issue.
I don't have an issue.
Then you may have to call the plumber.
I'm not calling a plumber.
Okay, get you.
But I don't have no issue. But next month, we're going to see what my bill is going to be.
Okay.
Okay? I took that 169, they fine. And we're going to see what my water is going to be because I'm not going to be there.
Okay, well, it's her water.
And I use 93.510 water in Chiplet. I got my bill. So how much y'all charging that gallon for water?
Tracy, can you get to her a rate on that?
Yes, all the water we paying that gallon of water in Vernon.
Oh, she billed the garage you that?
Okay.
So she can get.
Even my cousin that's water. It's three of them in the house. They wash, cook, clean. He water his garden and all that. And they, they water their everything. And they be like, listen, how you go over there and you stay and you use all this water? I take a shower in the afternoon. I don't even cook that water. I use gallon of water. So ever since I been coming, we got, got here, the two ladies at secretaries, they've been bothering me. We be entering the organ down to the organ. Ain't nobody threatening nobody. We just the organ. Because they, somebody can't read that meter. You need to put a new meter out there. I think you need to put a new meter out there. Just like you told Mr. Davis.
But this is completely different situation.
No, it's the same thing, okay?
You can't hear about late fee. Now you want to talk about a bad meter, which. I mean.
I'm talking about all together. We need to put a new meter out there. My meter been out there before 50 years. And by the old net cost, we were the last one to get sewer and water. While everybody running around with water and sewer, we running around with the outside toilet. So that meter been out there a long time. So I need a new meter out there.
Question to the council.
That meter been out there over 50 years. So we were the last one to get water and sewer and drawn. And you got your meter out there.
My question needed first of all, you got the meter wrong?
Huh?
You got the meter wrong?
Yes.
First of all, it's against the law.
Huh?
First of all, it's against the law. You know that.
And that against the law because I'm not tampering with it.
Yes, you did. You locked it.
No, I, that don't mean nothing.
Let me tell you now. As the council approval, I'm sending Jason out there tomorrow to cut the lock off that.
I'm going to take, I'm going to take it off. You guys sending my second out?
Take it off and I'll send Jason out there to put one on.
Well, then put a new meter on it.
And it'll stay locked till a month. We'll see what's wrong with the meter. But the thing is, there's ways to handle stuff.
I came here to try to talk with you.
I understand that. I understand that. But the thing is, there's proper ways to handle a situation.
I know it is.
I know your meters have. We talked to them about the last meeting, last workshop. I understand that. Same thing Mr. Vance got. I have, as a councilman, have no problem changing your meter out, but we can't lock that meter since you don't live there and look at it.
I live there. I move back and forth. I move from there, Chiplet, to Pownhouse City. Ain't nobody saying you got to fix your house. Moving here, moving there.
I understand that.
So technically, I do live there.
But we, as the council, is trying to find out what's wrong with your meter. I know the place is old. We know that.
We all know it's old.
You went to school with me, but the thing is, our public works cannot find this problem if we don't do step by step. Council has no problem changing.
I ain't heard of that. I'm just trying to get my corner called. You know I ain't never talk when I was in school. You hear me say three words.
I understand. But the thing is, it's proper procedures to go by. Just like if you don't pay your bill by the 15th, you're going to get charged a late fee.
Mister.
Understand that.
Okay, I understand that. But I came to the meeting after the 15th, okay? You adjusted my bill, but you still adding $40 on there. It said right here, late fee, $40.
Because it was late. 15th to the 19th.
You think I'm going to go out and sit down and pay them $385 and then you, you gonna be, be funding me? No, you ain't going to be funding me no $385. You can just adjust it.
Listen, we got to move on, but the thing is, you understand where I'm coming from.
I know where you're coming from.
If you got that meter, you got that meter box lock. Unlock that meter box.
I got the lock, key to the lock.
Okay, unlock that meter box.
I, I unlock that meter box tonight and I get there.
I'll have.
Oh, my will to unlock that meter. If you talk to me proper, I'll talk to you proper.
Could some of the reason that tired be a lag over from the month before when there was whatever was going on, somebody, somebody stealing or whatever it was?
Definitely singing. That might be the line.
Been a, an overlap there?
You have a sound.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying that might be why it's high because there could have been a little bit of overlap there from when it was red and somebody was stealing water or whatever was happening.
Then she gonna, you gonna, I'm saying, if I would have paid the 15th, I would have paid you $385, right? After the 15th, I came to the meeting, right? And you adjusted my bill, okay? And I paid it. 145, right?
130.
Okay, I gave you, uh, 145.
So your rate here then would be, that's the current rate there, and that's what your rate study said they should be. Change this rate very slightly in charge per thousand gallons. So moving into the wastewater part, the calculations are essentially the same. This is how much wastewater you treated, how many, what your sales are, what your expenses are. And again, over here, these numbers are a little different than the first numbers of 18%. These are 10, 20, 35%. Why? Because it treats a lot more, costs a lot more rather to treat wastewater than does water. So you have to provide some reserve and, and some expenses going forward. And that's the key part, what I'm going to show you next. Next to next. That's the rates now. That's the rates going forward. It's not that big of a deal. So they didn't have a great concern of what the rates are going to be. So why are they in trouble? Because they have, they didn't take into account their capital improvement program. We were guessing at it. This number should have been almost a million dollars because they're so far gone on their wastewater treatment, both in the wet, wet stations and the, and the facility, treatment facility itself, that they're having really problems now. But that concerns Mariestra, not you folks. So what do we do now? This is the next version of what I did show you. This is the Red Plan. This, this is from Paxton and I did this in last April. So it's very recent, four months old. All these little categories that I have to fill in except for one, which is assets. We have a fellow who does the asset management for us and it takes him months to do this. Took him months to do this project. Over here, you have the capital program, capital improvement program as well. But I'll just show you some briefly what goes into that. So this is all I asked you, how many connections you have and water in terms of water meters and wastewater and how many gallons per day that you use of each. So it was pretty simple stuff. Capital financing, they're asking for the drinking and wastewater revenues. So it's getting a little more dicey in some of the calculations the program does for you. So you can use three to five percent as you, as you increase for, for the span of time. As time goes on, obviously prices go up. This is their debt. So you have sewers, water, water, and water here. This all comes from, I get this information from their, for their audit. So that's something I want to tell you. All this information has to be documented. I can't just go to the operator and say, what, how much water did you use last year? How many connections do you have? They have to have it written and documented so they can show it. If you walk in and say, where'd this number come from? There it is. No questions asked. Because when we get to the end of the line, when you start, so how much is it going to cost us? There's a reason why and we can show it here where the reason came from. Very important. So all these, again, from the audit, I get all this information. And it answers two years, 2020 and 2021. Going, I'll show you going forward how it fits together. But you can see all your costs. And again, once again, they're all documented and I can show you on a piece of paper or on the audit where they came from. Yeah. Seeing all of this, what does it all mean? All these are sketches of this information put in various configurations. So I may not understand one thing. You may understand another. So that's why it's put in this kind of configuration. But is this a dashboard? This tells you everything you want to know about. It puts it on the graph and, and numeric as well. It tells you where you need and where you're going to be based on your, your calculations going forward, where you're going to need to be in two, three, four, five years. That's basically the whole program in a nutshell. I can show you more if you want to see more, but more or less, you're going to see the same thing. Numbers that don't mean anything to you right now. But once I start putting in the numbers, it's going to be revealing what it was to me when the first time I did it. Wow. So I can show you more if you, if you focus. Are you sick and tired already of it?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Oh, no, I get no.
Comprehend what I'm looking at.
I know. It's bad right in your head. But if I had to recommend one of the two, it's like, rate studies are old fashioned. They don't, they don't have the comprehensive approach that this does. And that's where we're going into the future. Comprehensive analysis of things and stuff. People want to know where everything comes from and how it gets there. That's what this does. Now, along with this is what's the Red Plan is Asset Management Plan. Right back here. Right here, asset. I don't do that. See here, diamond maps? We love diamond maps, don't we?
We love it.
Yes, we do. Diamond maps, I don't know if you've seen them again. Have you? Seen anything with diamond maps? We create a map of the entire city. And on that map, which is where the borderlines are, your sewer lines, your manholes, your valves, everything's on this map. Your fire hydrants. It's all on the map. We put it there. You guys actually put it there. May take you a couple of months, but it'll all be on the map. So if you have a leak or a blowout at a certain point in your water system, you'll probably find out where it is, identify that on the map, put in what, when it was there, what you did to fix it, and then stay there forever. So it's five years from now. I wonder how that system's doing now. Do we have any connections or failures at this point? It's all right there. And something to say, it really is like, wow, it's really amazing. But that's, that's in the diamond maps. But this, all they see are fittings, the hydrants, the valves, hydrometric tanks, meters. That's all, that's all. We make an inventory, all that stuff. And, and the inventory tells you the age of it, the condition of it, how long it's been in the ground, how long it's expected to last. And have a number associated with it, financial number. So you have an idea going forward. Well, you know, we're going to save up for this, this particular pump. It's going to cost $10,000. It could be gone in 10 years, but for the thousand year term. That's what it's about, really in a nutshell. It shows you what you need you're going to be. And again, it's an estimate. It's a man's, a human being's point of view about them just for the last. It could be 10 years, it could be 30, I don't know. But it gives you an idea of how to think in the future. That's what I know. Would you like one?
Well, tell us about that, about getting one.
Well, the cost is free.
Okay.
What it, what it is, is that DEP pays for it. The only thing that's going to cause you problems is if you get into it and say, we don't want it anymore. We'll never come back. It won't cost you anything, but we'll never come back. Well, they come back maybe years and years.
So this is a, this is a membership printer.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. This costs approximately 30, you know, 31, 31,000 dollars. That's the cost of this mapping, the mapping, this program, the Red Plan, and asset management. To get, or it costs, Paxton's $30,000. 31, 130,000.
Sorry. Can you call the city of Paxton after you have this, for me to do this?
And plus, I made the diamond maps and the, the asset management.
Okay, so. Jimmy.
You already have an asset management.
We can't hear you.
You, you are an asset manager.
How old is it?
Oh, a few years. Paul Hoffman, Paul Hoffman did it.
Have you, have you updated it?
I don't think Vernon's done anything to it.
That's a problem. That may take me a little more effort to get to the bottom of it. But our bottom line is if you even have to update it, it's still free.
Okay. To clarify, you said that this is free as basically it's a benefit if we become a member? If we are, okay, well, I'm just going by this Mariestra letter.
Yeah, yes.
So you said that it's free to the city, but it costs Paxton.
No, they got those for free too. If they had, had paid for it, that's what the charge would have been.
So this is no cost to the city whatsoever, any form, but you just said that if we ever off it out of it?
Well, before we're done, it's probably have to wait three or five years for us to come back. We have a waiting business enormous for this project, this project. You're looking at it. Not the asset management part, no. I'll do the rest of it, all the stuff that's all here. I won't do this stuff. Enough qualified to do it.
Who does that?
Uh, Ron Dowling. He works for us.
Is there a fee? Is there a fee? Does he charge a fee?
No.
Will it go with the system that we already have?
If you have a system, if you're okay with that system and you want it updated, we'd like, we'd do that for you. But if you have a system that's years old.
I don't think about that system. I mean, because.
And we just.
I mean, if it's only two years old.
It's only been a few years. It's only been a few years.
Okay, so do you know whether or not that it would be, would go hand in hand? It would?
Probably. It, it needed, it's a working document. What Vernon, I don't know what Vernon's done with it, but they should have just kept updating it through diamond maps, using diamond maps. I don't know what happened to it.
So has it been updated? Has it been being used?
We're using diamond maps.
We just don't use diamond maps.
So are we not applying it to the drains, anything that we have as far as manholes? Are we, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing?
What we have on diamond maps right now is outdated. I mean, it don't even have the four lane on it.
Did the rural water transfer them that they're, had over a year come with that?
Yeah, but it's all, they don't even have the four lane on it. It don't have, it has no new water pipes on it.
I would say it was from 2017 or 18. We've had a lot of updates since then.
Yeah. So who do we go before to get those updates? Do we have to go back to diamond maps and get the updates?
I can do it personally.
Or you can do it, right?
Or he can do it.
What I want to do first is, I know this condition existed, let me do some fishing around and find it from our folks. That's what we afford them. It's still not going to cost you anything. Unless he changed the rules last night, but he didn't. Some people do that without me. So, you know, let's find out what you really need to do, get going. If you're saying it's four to five years old, it's not worth it. But it could be good to build it for them. I think new information. The whole trick is, you have the good information. It's a living document. It's going to be updated.
So that's the only problem is now we've not updated what we have and if someone, either somebody just kicked the bucket and said, I'm not doing it? Or, I don't know.
Well, y'all.
I mean, that's the first of them.
People come and people go. When they go, they don't take things with them and they'll transfer what they do know to other people to show and show it up. There's no, don't feel bad about it, but it happens in the best of circles, okay? How people are. I'd be more than happy to work with you and find out what we need to do to get this back on track. That's what you want me to do.
And it's going to give us a cost analysis of showing where we're losing water, where we're, what the wastewater is costing versus bringing in, okay?
Yeah. And this doesn't happen in a week or a month. It may take a couple of months to do this.
Yeah, at least I would think.
Well, and you said.
About time manager.
You said that there were some things that you needed to check on too, to see how we would need to pursue.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, my people, yeah.
And this is something we have to go down anyway.
That's Diana, the name's Diana Stewart, Ron Downey. Those people I work with. And Ben Lewis is the guy I really gotta talk to to get back, re, get you guys back re-involved. They scared the heck out of me when I first saw it. I can't think of this, no. But the more you work on it, the more it comes, oh, that's.
All right, has anybody else had anything on this? So I guess you're gonna follow up and see what needs to be done, and then you come back with this one different meeting again?
Have any meeting again?
Our next meeting is August 15th.
In the day or night?
Night.
Good, okay.
If not, it'll be September 6th is our next workshop.
Okay. Second pump.
Number three, Dale Long, we just wanted to hear in terms of the.
Hey, I didn't see one.
All right, Ellen, see. So Jason and Tracy asked me to come and, and I guess answer any questions that you might have regarding SCADA. So just kind of zoom out and tell you how we got there. Fred Fox and his group are working on a grant application for Hurricane Michael to do several things in the city. One is put, lift station generators at all your lift stations. The other was to update the force main connection out of school metal inspection to Dawkins Road. And while we were going through pricing and all that, working through all that, we started talking about whether or not the city wanted to put SCADA station, or SCADA on each of the lift stations. So SCADA is an acronym for, I don't remember what it stands for, honestly, it's. Anyway. It's basically an electronic unit that fits on each lift station, sends signals back out, which allows Jason and his staff, or really anybody who's logged into the system, to check on a website and see what's going on with the lift station. So it's an alarming system. It monitors the water level in lift stations, it monitors where the pumps are running, it can monitor all kinds of things, depending on how complicated it gets, how much it's set up. But generally speaking, at least from your staff's perspective, if at 2:00 in the morning an alarm goes off, your staff member gets that alarm, they can look at their phone, or on a laptop, or iPad, or whatever, whatever device they have, and see what's actually going on and going wrong, or trip that alarm at the station. As opposed to now, if the alarm goes off, if he's, if they're even called, I don't even know what system he got. Maybe somebody called because the bugger's going off on him.
Pretty much.
Yeah. But in order to know what's going on, they have to get out of bed at 2:00 in the morning, go to the lift station, go through what, you know, what, what caused the alarm, and so on and so forth. So it can, it can be, it can be something simple, they can, and even you have some level of control, depending on how deep you can get into the SCADA system. To be able to do all this remotely without having to send people out and spend time and staff money and overtime hours, that kind of thing. So the grant would pay for actually putting a unit at each of the stations. That's the easy part. And I think the reason that I'm here and the reason that Tracy and Jason asked me to come was to talk about the part that is the ongoing cost of each of these, these units. So these are cellular based. There's three kinds of SCADA systems that are in operation. There's a radio based, which uses big antennas, you might have seen those lift stations around, utility utilities. And a base station, and that's used radio frequency to communicate back and forth. There's the old dial-up system, which was an old copper phone line. You get a phone line in each station and they call out what this is simple alarm. This is cellular based. So, you know, we all have cell, cell phones. So basically, you would assign a cell number to each one of these stations. And the unit could talk through that cell line back to, I guess, a computer website, which then Jason and whoever in staff would log on to and see what's going on. So your cost for each of these units is a cell phone line. So you got 10 lift stations, that'd be 10 new cell phone lines. And then each unit has a cost associated with it for maintaining the website and all the data transfer from, from the station to the website. And that's about, I think it's anywhere, depending on the level of service you give, anywhere from fifteen dollars a month to thirty dollars a month. So those, and I don't know exactly what your cell phone cost is. It could be, you know, twenty, fifty bucks a month, depends on who you've got your carrier with, and what, what your deal is, if you have a, if you carry. So let's just say for round numbers, fifty bucks a month per station. So obviously, that's a significant cost annually when you're working your budget. So how do you, how do you mitigate that? Well, there's a couple ways. You got 10 lift stations, but all 10 of them aren't critical. Some of them are smaller. So you could, you don't necessarily have to put SCADA on every single one of them. You can just put SCADA on the ones that are either problematic, they'll always call Jason at 2:00 in the morning to go out and fix something. Or they're bigger, they get a lot more flow, so when they overflow or have a problem, it's a lot more catastrophic. So you can do anything from all 10 of them, to one of them, to five of them, to none of them. That's, that's really up to you and what the city wants in the budget for the system. So. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on SCADA systems, but I'll answer any questions I can.
So the total cost to the city against the cell phone bill, the service?
Cell phone bill and managing the, the system, the website that you log on to to analyze what's going on in each of the stations.
On how much you did?
So total between both of them, around fifty bucks. It's about, it's about fifteen dollars to thirty dollars a month for the monitoring. And then on top of that, whatever your cell phone bill is.
And the cell phone bill is how much? About thirty-five dollars per line? Thirty-five mile line?
Yeah, so sixty or seventy a month, at worst case. And the, the levels of, of service that you get through each of these systems ranges, the reason I said from fifteen to thirty dollars, it ranges from just being there and maintaining, to all the way through being able to log on and control the pumps, turn the pumps on and off on your phone. There's a lot of different levels of service. And again, that's, could be adjusted, but each station's different. Some stations get a more controlled than others, so there's some ways to work your way through it.
Do these systems work off of solar, or do they work off of regular power?
They work off the power. They don't care where the power comes from, so. If you were to come and put solar at each station, you could potentially run it that way. But right now, you have electricity at your station, theoretically, the grant goes through.
We have a generator.
Generator as well, so you have backup power all the time. And I think they actually have a battery in them too. So if power went out completely, they could still run on that battery.
I want to learn about that battery.
I do not understand. I'm not salesperson, so I don't, I don't have all the details on the system. And there's, there's multiple systems, at least three over four of them that I know of. So you wouldn't, you won't be locked into this guy's system or that guy's system. But if you're gonna buy them in a bid situation, you, you know, obviously you can select which system you like. And go with that for all of them, so it'd be consistent with the more, the more potential stations or applications you do.
I think it would be very beneficial to the city. But I think that's what the question was too, the money to pay for it in the budget. So we've got ten, ten stations at around sixty. It's gonna be around sixty each.
Six hundred dollars.
So six hundred dollars a month.
And you wouldn't have to, again, this grant, you're months, if not years away from this happening. It's not like you have to vote right now to do it. Really, all we're trying to do is, is get the cost estimate right, so that when we apply for it, we are blocking right now. That's really, and I didn't want you to be surprised, hey, we got you ten SCADA systems, yay. Oh, by the way, it's gonna cost you seven hundred dollars a month. That, that's really, that's really what, the reason I'm here. So there'll be a public, I'm sorry.
If you get the grant, and we're gonna fall into SCADA system?
If, if you want to. You don't, the SCADA system's not.
I know, it's not included in the grant, I know.
It could be either way. So we'll, we'll have a public meeting. Mr. Fox and his group will come up and do a public meeting. And at that public meeting, that would be the time you would actually vote yes, you want to include the SCADA and the generators and all, all the work in the grant application. That'll probably be at one of your next two meetings, 'cause I know we're on.
August 16th.
And I guess I'll be back at that, so I can answer questions in the queue.
Anybody else had anything on the three members' town?
Um, I did provide everyone with a copy of the ad that's going in the paper Wednesday and Saturday for that public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Number four, Grace's family church, Ms. Mary, what is?
Hi, uh, hey, actually, I'm just kind of here representing the church, Grace Church. Um, we're in that area behind the track. And it's really interesting to notice all the people that use the track and how they comment and what they do, and the kids in the neighborhood and everything. And we'd like to put some bitches over there. We'll pay for them. Um, we'll anchor them, maintain them, and put on a name on them. And anybody who's fair to use them. And then, you know, we're just thinking in the long run, uh, maybe a couple of trees. Make it real conducive to the families that live there. The kids play on the street, it'd be nice to see them over there playing on the grass instead of on the street. Stuff like that, but we're willing to do the buying and the cleaning out there. We just want to joust approval. So I guess you have to vote on it, but that's.
Well, the problem is, the tennis courts.
And they had to come back to the county.
Yeah, all the tennis courts and all.
Yeah. Okay, I've heard about that. That area in that oat bowl is too small for a tennis court. Unless you take the oat bowl also. Why didn't they move over to where the basketball courts are that no one uses? We have, we have a basketball ball and stuff there that mainly kids come and play on our church property. We're fine with that. Uh, it's just, you, you have to come out like in the evenings and see the people sitting out on their cars. They got their cars parked out there, there's their own hood, there's their car, and they're neat and greasy and all that kind of stuff. Isn't it some nice little area where, you know, they don't have a lot of stuff back there?
You're talking, I'm talking about on the exterior of the track, not the interior.
Oh, no, sir. Yeah, the exterior, around, yeah.
You're talking about the outside though.
And I just sent Gloria a message to find out if they've updated anything about the tennis court.
Well, knowing that, but we're working on having everything changed over to the school. Where we can actually get a grant and do something about there as well, and we've all talked about that.
Yeah, but I, in my mind, I see a pavilion, a couple of barbecue places, a couple of big.
Perfectly, well, she's talking about where all the walkers, the city, you know, we need to do something about.
Yeah, and I said.
You know, if that's cleaned up, over at the side, there's an oak tree there.
You've got a tractor, haven't you?
No. I travel, I get it. That needs cleaning, that city needs it. But it's perfectly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Problem is, you're gonna need a rail tractor.
Yeah.
You're gonna need a excavator to move all that.
Now, look, I want to tell you, I've got shovels for all of you. We'll make playdate, we'll have so much fun. But no, that, I mean, it's, it's, it's not being used. It's a perfect area. It's in an area that they kind of need, I think. I think if you've benefited a lot of those little houses back there, they have some place to come and. And I, I really don't see, like, the binges, I, I would go and buy them now and put them out there. So I don't see that as being, and then I start getting grandiose and along the way, start talking about some of the other stuff.
Suggest if you're gonna put something over there. I don't create it down.
Yes, sir.
Because, I mean, I, we, I do a lot of stuff over there at football field. We've had two lawnmowers vandalized, we've had a gator vandalized over there. I mean, they get out of the football field, they tear it up out there.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna put it up out there. Make sure that, I don't know, somebody can tear it.
That's kind of the interesting thing. Uh, we put a picnic table out in our, we've got a chain, because you're right. But nobody's written on it, scratched on it, messed on it. We have a basketball ball out there, nobody's tried to wheel it off, it's not attached to anything. I think, you know, when they know it's for them and nobody cares that they're there, that, well, this is ours too, and we can, we can use it. Uh, I've never seen kids over there on that basketball court, but they're in our church parking lot.
Cause there's lighting at the church parking lot, and there's not any lighting.
Yeah, see, so, but ultimately, when, if we really get to talking about it, and you really think it's a great plan, we could figure out about that dirt, because every time I see it, I think, eyesore. But then I also think of what, yeah, what could be there, what could really be there. You know, we've got enough in that if someone shipped in some lumber and everything, we could put up a pavilion easily. And I just think a lot of people are really sensitive in that neighborhood.
You know, Ms. Mary, we, we actually, correct, if I'm wrong, we have applied for a grant, but we were denied.
But that's what Michelle's been working on, is getting the paperwork right.
We're working on our paperwork straightaway, so we can actually get some grants to improve that back there.
Wow, that, yeah.
We talked about lighting, we talked about.
It needs to be playground.
We talked about a lot of things.
Oh, yeah, but, see, I saw that, a big screen set and everything. There's a lot, I mean, like I said, if you go, like, on Wednesday night, I'm there on Wednesday night because we have church. But there's always a lot of cars, there's always kids, there's always walkers. Uh, there's, you know, it just would be, I would like to be part of it if you guys did. I'm just thinking it'd be fun to get some stuff going over there. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mary.
All right, Michelle, have you had any? Any update on, on that?
Oh, it's been, it's been a month, I wasn't there. The tunnel down.
Right now, you can wait on the school board?
Yes.
Ben, you want to read on that? I'll check on it, get that dirt.
We know, it's gonna cost.
Yeah, maybe, we know that, we could talk. Yeah, but. Uh, what's in that stuff? The rock, pipe?
It's tiny, because somebody could get hurt in that.
Yeah, but somebody could, if somebody could throw something in it, they did.
I'm not checking.
And it is, for the most part, dirt. I mean, you just spread the dirt, even. Yeah, we've got a tiny sifter, you know.
We've offered, and some people have, you lost it whenever they got dirt, they're like, I don't like anything from that. But it's just, I'm not that.
Is it, is it safe, or have we determined whether it's safe to, anybody can just come through and take it, or?
If it was offered, it's, it's been offered free for the last two years that I know of.
Nobody's ever come.
The only person I know that has had a hold of batteries, I know thirty loads. People have.
Well, I didn't know it was spring, I picked, I sent my boys down with the wheelbarrow.
Yeah, 'cause I've been told both, I've been told, and my kids were crawling all over the time, and somebody told me it, and maybe seven, five of them, so.
Well, at one point, there were, I saw some in it.
Okay, so I've told them, you know.
And I've stopped children from playing on the ball. But it, it has been used, people have used it to fill in hot holes and things like that, let in their yard and stuff. That I know for sure. But there's just so much of it.
Maybe everybody doesn't know that. Maybe it can go back on the website again. Yeah, and if there's stuff that's lying in it, then at this stage of the game, if it's been sitting there this long and it's not affected or bothered, then you gotta think that it's pretty well from dirt on some level. I mean, I wouldn't put it in my sandlot, but.
Okay, number five, cemetery committee, Ms. Gonda Dean.
I am requesting five dol, five hundred dollars to remove a tree that is encroaching on, uh, it's already lifted, one. uh, it's already lifted, one headstone on the grave, and some others are fixing to be affected. And it is leaning, it is a problem that could fall over on somebody and the city gets sued. I have somebody lined up who is willing to remove that tree for us for five hundred dollars. And I'd like you guys to give me five hundred dollars to do it. I spent two hundred dollars last week to get poison cut out of the camellia bushes, to get a yohant tree removed that had already completely covered at least one grave and possibly two. I'm still waiting on my GPR system to find out about that. But, um, I paid for that out of my own pocket. I'm not talking about how much I've paid over the last few years at that cemetery. So I would just like five hundred dollars, I've already got somebody lined up, and it'll be taken care of.
The tree is uprooting graves.
Yes, it is.
So it's got, I mean, it needs to come out.
And it's, and it's leaning, so if someone's out there having a funeral around it, there is a big possibility, because the bottom part of it's dead, that it could actually fall on somebody. And then we'd be in big trouble.
I have no problem with.
It has to be, but it don't.
So does that mean y'all can vote on it tonight, or it has to go to the sixteenth meeting?
The sixteenth.
Okay. And then the next thing with the cemetery committee, thank y'all for listening to that, is when am I gonna get the GPR? The trucks have already been approved. Jason, you told me that if you were gonna get your trucks, I could have that money. The trucks are coming, you know that, can we go ahead and get the GPR?
I can't even get my personal truck.
I have two quotes right now for the GPR.
Okay, did Jimmy help?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, okay.
I keep R. S. U.
So is that something that we're gonna be dealing with at the next meeting?
Can I hear the prices of the quotes?
I have mine, so I don't know what they are.
Oh, we don't know, okay, all right.
They've been sealed in all of them that way.
But possibly that can be voted on at the next meeting, too? Good.
Is Ollie having thrown them?
Yes, yes, y'all make me happy, thank you.
Um, public participation, Mr. Dave Van.
Tonight, Reverend Michelle, which there at the church, where the state has set us a, a water bill out of nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. And we wonder what's going on here.
I don't mind.
I guess Chad read it last two months. And then it goes on the rereads, and they read it again, and then I didn't know about it until she called me and got me to read it, and then.
It's correct.
I mean, the numbers are right. I don't, I don't know if maybe they messed up the month before, I don't know.
How much does it average on a regular month?
Minimum?
The minimum?
Yeah.
So forty-five? So probably wasn't a misread from the month before then, if it was minimum reading. Have y'all checked for leaks already? Has it been?
It wasn't standing when they went and checked three times, five meter?
That's what I wanted, is it need a bad?
Phone bank could be, I guess. The numbers are right, I mean, because it had another leak, and I walked around the church, so.
We, and you have, I mean, outside faucets.
Yeah.
And they're, they have not been used. I walked around there all today, and it just dripped around there.
The day I, yeah, the day I got the call, I went down there and it hadn't rained, you know, and so I walked around. I mean, I can change the meter out.
I was gonna say, it would probably be flooding if that kind of.
And right now, you can't even see it.
No, that could come over, leave the building by now.
It's got to be, I mean, I agree with them.
Tracy said the bill they're running for is high?
Yes.
What, all of it?
We said forty-five, forty-six, yeah.
Yeah, the whole history shows.
Yeah. The deal is forty-six, the whole history, you know, yeah.
Last one, that was a little bit high, twelve hundred and thirty gallons.
Maybe church folks run a grandma. That's still. You're talking about a hundred and forty thousand gallons.
Hundred and forty thousand.
Not a third of that way.
And they want to have first, then you send it down.
I'm making recommendations, yes, change the meter. And took the bill at forty-five, forty-six dollars.
And that's, we don't have to bet on that bill.
We'll have to bet on the.
Put it on the.
Yeah, on the. For that's not.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna bet on it. I'll just reveal back to the normal rate that you normally pay, and they're gonna change, change out the meter.
And change it up, I don't know.
So hopefully that'll fix the problem.
See when it runs next month.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Ms. Linda, did you have something, you're not on the list, but I know I have something you can add to the.
I have, I have something on that list. My, uh, when was the last meeting we had?
The nineteenth.
Huh?
The nineteenth.
On the nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, we came in, I adjusted my bill, and I just told me, I had, how many days y'all been in there paying?
One day.
Uh, I had paid, and they said I owe a late fee for dollars. But I came in, I adjusted my bill from, uh, three ninety, three eighty-five, and you adjusted my bill to, uh, one forty-five, and I paid it. And I understand I owe forty dollars for late fees.
Some of those late fees were adjusted.
No, I'm saying you owe, you charged me forty dollars because you didn't pay, I didn't pay my bill on time by the fifteenth. But I came to the meeting, you adjusted my bill.
Mm-hmm.
So how is there a late fee?
Because late fees are assessed on the fifteenth at five P. M. Your bill was not paid on the fifteenth by five P. M.
To adjust my bill, so I don't owe you no forty dollars.
We adjusted part of the late fees. We adjusted a hundred and twenty-four dollars off of your water, so we adjusted twelve dollars and forty-three cents off your late fees.
No, you said I didn't pay my bill on time.
You did not.
It was not.
No, ma'am.
But I came to the meeting, and you adjusted my bill, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So how do I owe forty dollars?
You didn't owe forty dollars, we adjusted that down.
You adjusted now.
We already have adjusted it.
How you adjusted?
We adjusted it on the twentieth, today after three.
I'm just saying, I paid a bill of three hundred and eighty-five dollars, okay? I came to the meeting, she adjusted my bill, and I had to pay it before five o'clock, right?
Mm-hmm.
So now she's saying I owe forty dollars because I didn't pay it by the fifteenth. So if I would've came in at fifteen, I would've had to pay three hundred and eighty-five dollars, right? So I paid to the meeting. So I should owe forty dollars for late fees.
You don't.
My bill now should be a hundred and twenty-nine dollars instead of one sixty-nine. So if you take forty off of one sixty-nine, that should be one twenty-nine.
We adjusted twenty-six dollars off of your late fees.
That's for last month.
Right.
This month, you charged me a forty dollars on there.
For last month.
Last month, it should be a late fee.
You didn't pay it by the fifteenth.
Because I came to the meeting, and she adjusted my bill.
And we adjusted part of those late fees off. But we can't adjust all your late fees because you did not pay it on time.
But I came to the meeting, didn't I? So why should I agree? How do y'all normally leave it?
Do you? Just like I did it?
Uh-uh. My first year, I paid what, thirty-five dollars, right?
I adjusted the late fees off of what the adjustment was for her bill, because it was ten percent. We adjusted a hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents for her water, so I adjusted a hundred and twelve dollars and forty-three cents to the late fee. Off of the sewer, we adjusted a hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety cents, so we did an adjustment of thirteen fifty-nine to the late fees.
So how do I owe eight fees if it ain't next month? It should be on next week, month, so why do I owe a forty dollar late fee there?
Tracy, false says what?
If it's not paid by the fifteenth, it gives a ten percent late fee.
Because I came to the meeting, didn't I?
And that was after the fifteenth, Ms. Linda.
No.
That was, you came to the meeting after you'd already been paid the late fees, so.
No.
Yes, ma'am.
My bill should be one twenty-nine.
No, I mean, the bill that you called about, when you came to the meeting about, had already been billed those late fees on the fifteenth.
It's already billed, the bill come out for the fifteenth.
What I'm telling you, you came to the meeting to get the adjustment after you'd already been billed those late fees, and they were adjusted off.
No, you said the bill before, I just got this bill. So you added forty dollars on there.
Now, I mean, I'm not the way that I'm looking at what I've got running me right.
My water bill did not run a hundred and sixty-nine dollars on, me and my quick grandkids, we were there four days, sad, this son of a bitch must be Tuesday. You're really adding forty dollars to my bill? Yes, you are. You can't adjust a bill when the bill had, when the bill just came out. Bill just came out, and I supposed to pay three hundred and eighty-five dollars before the fifteenth. So I came in after the fifteenth to talk to you about my bill. So you adjusted the water.
Yeah, it was the, I think it was the nineteenth.
Yeah, the nineteenth, I'm in the nineteenth.
We did the adjustment, but.
You adjusted my, that month bill, also for this month.
What she's been trying to explain here, when I'm looking at here, that's a carryover, so it looks like.
It wasn't a carryover because I paid one forty-five. That's how much you told me in paper bill.
I think the bill was one twenty-eight, you paid one thirty.
Yeah, I'm looking at the C. It was one thirty.
Okay, you're saying you got, that's not right, though. You say I paid to the meeting for that, I only got two bills since I've been there. Now, this one month, and next bill, it was three hundred and eighty-five dollars. I came to the meeting, you couldn't adjust the bill with it. I came to the meeting, or you already adjusted it.
No, ma'am, that's not what we're saying.
It's, I'm honestly just saying that. You added forty dollars, if you added forty dollars to that bill, you added forty-five for the next month bill.
No, ma'am, according to what I'm looking at here, and I don't do the bills.
Because they'll type up something different, because I got my bill right here.
Okay, Ms. Linda, I'm, I'm, you know, I understand that you're upset, I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm trying to.
But listen.
Why you do what I'm looking at?
I used Chipley. I use ninety-three, five, ten, okay? My bill never run over eighty dollars, never. And that's not, that's double time water I use on Burn. Burn, I use sixteen, four hundred. Chipley, I use ninety-three, five, ten. Okay? They water bill is seven, eight dollars.
Well, it.
And you didn't add a tenth of forty dollars on one sixty-nine. Because I only got two bills there. One bill for three hundred and eighty-five dollars, so how do you, you adjusted my water, you didn't adjust no forty dollars. She added forty dollars for this month bill. That was last month bill. But this is my second bill, right here, see that? One of the first bill was thirty-five dollars. The second bill, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, okay? So how do you adjust that, that much? You adjusted my water. You adjusted my water, and stuff. One thirty-nine, two oh four, and that's a thirty-seven late fee.
Ms. Linda, the bill history that I'm looking at, where you paid the hundred and thirty dollars back, and we adjusted it down from the three eighty-five that it was originally, shows that the water was adjusted, um, sales tax was adjusted, sewer was adjusted.
So you, all the way up to one forty for this bill right here. I'll tell you what, I cut my water off out there, okay?
Well, just don't tamper with the meter.
I'm not tampering, if I would've tampered with it, you would've put a lock in, because I already asked a lot of folks about that. If I would've tampered with it, you would've put a lock on it, and I would've went up and took a hammer off.
I, I had a second to have, I said, I was just telling you.
That's what you said, I tampered with the water, because I cut it out. No, uh.
She turned the meter off and put a lock on the meter.
I did, because I told y'all last time, I said I was gonna cut that water, because I found a bill, a drop lock out there from somewhere in Alabama, I don't know who it was. I turned my meter off and locked it so nobody could go up and turn it on. There ain't nothing on there.
Against the law.
If you would've put a lock on it, and I would've been able to knock it off, that would've been tampered with.
But it is in property, so you put your.
No, it's on my watch.
Also tampered.
I set the lock off for it. But, listen, you guys is very notorious, too much for people in this little town, we only got less than eight hundred people. That water bill shouldn't be that high when I'm not there, not the one sixty-nine. You keep telling me about a leak, there ain't no leak out there.
I think when we talked to you about this last time, when we did the adjustment, we said if there was an issue with it again, that you would have to.
There ain't no issue with that water, because I'm not there.
Okay, well, I, I'm not there to see what's going with it either, Ms. Linda. I'm just telling you that if you're having an issue with.
I'm not having an issue.
Water rate.
I paid that one thirty-sixty-nine, but next month, my bill should be forty dollars. That's all it should be next month, because I'm not there.
Okay, well, like I said, if you're having an issue.
I don't have an issue.
Then you may have to call the county.
I'm not calling the county.
Okay, get you.
But I don't have an issue, but next month, we're gonna see what my bill gonna be.
Okay.
Okay? I'm gonna put that one sixty-nine, this five, and we're gonna see what my water gonna be, because I'm not, I'm gonna be there.
Okay, well, it's her law, get that. Yes, ma'am.
And I use ninety-three, five hundred and ten water in Chipley. I got my bill. So how much y'all charging that gallon for water?
Tracy, can you get for her a rate on that?
Yes, all the, you pay that gallon of water.
Yes, ma'am, but she'll be able to provide you that.
Okay, as soon as she can get. Even my cousin that's water, it's three of them in the house. They wash, cook, clean, he water his garden, eh, and all that, and they, they water their nephew, and they act his mother. They be like, listen, how you go over there and you stay and you use all of these waters? I take a shower in the afternoon. I don't even cup that water. I use gallon of water. So ever since I've been cooking, we've got, got her, the two ladies at front, secretaries, they've been bothering me. We be entering the organ, down to the organ, and if I threaten nobody, that's the organ. Because they, somebody can't read that meter. You need to put a new meter out there, I think you need to put a new meter out there. Just like you told Mr. Dave.
But, this is two completely different situations.
No, it's the same thing, okay?
You came here about late fee, now you wanna talk about a bad meter, which.
I mean, I'm talking about all together, we need to put a new meter out there, but I've meter been out there for fifty years. And by the old that cost, we were the last one to get sewer and water. While everybody running around with water and sewer, we running around with the outside toilet. So that meter been out there a long time. So I need a new meter out there.
Question to the council.
That meter been out there over fifty years. So we were the last one to get water and sewer and running, and we got it in the middle of town.
My question is, first of all, when you, you got the meter locked?
Huh?
You got the meter locked?
Yes.
First of all, it's against the law.
Huh?
First of all, it's against the law, you know that.
And that gets the law, because I'm not tampering with it.
Yes, you did, you locked it.
No, I, that don't mean nothing.
Let me tell you now, as the council approval, I'm sending Jason out there tomorrow to cut the lock off that.
I'm gonna go and say, I'm gonna say it off, and I get, you guys send him out and say it off?
Take it off, and I'll send Jason out there and put one on it.
Well, and then put a new meter on it.
And it'll stay locked till the month, and we'll see what's wrong with the meter, but the thing is, there's ways to handle stuff.
I came here to try and talk with you at the front desk.
I understand that, but the thing is, there's proper ways to handle a situation.
I know it is.
I know your meters are, we talked to it about the last meeting, last workshop, I understand that, same thing Mr. Van's got. I have, as a councilman, have no problem changing your meter out, but we can't lock that meter since you don't live there, and look at.
I live there. I moved back and forth. I moved from Dar, Chipley, to Powderlown City. Ain't nobody said you got, foot in your house, moving here, moving there. Ain't nobody said you got, foot in your house, moving here, moving there.
I understand that.
Typically, I do live there.
But we, as a council, is trying to find out what's wrong with your meter. I know the place is old, we know that.
We all know it's old.
You went to school with me, but the thing is, our public works cannot find this problem if we don't do step by step. Council has no problem changing my meter out.
I ain't hardly never, I'm just trying to get my corner clock. You know I ain't never talked when I was in school, you hear me say three words.
I understand, but the thing is, it's proper procedures to go by, just like, you don't pay your bill by the fifteenth, you gonna get charged your late fee.
Yes ma'am.
Understand that.
Okay, I understand that, but I came to the meeting after the fifteenth, okay? You adjusted my bill. But you still adding forty dollars on there. It said right here, late fee, forty dollars.
Cause it was late. Fifteenth to the nineteenth.
You think I'm gonna go out six dollars, pay down three hundred and eighty-five dollars? And then you, you gonna be, be, be front of me? No, you ain't gonna be front of me, no, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. It been there, you adjusted.
Listen, we gotta move on, but the thing is, you understand where I'm coming from.
I know where you're coming from.
If you got that meter, if you got that meter box locked, unlock, get meter box.
I got the lock, key to the lock.
Okay, unlock, get meter box.
I, I unlock that meter box tonight when I get there.
I'll have to.
Oh, my word, I unlock that meter, if you talk to me proper, I'll talk to me proper.
Did some of the, did some of the reason that tired, it be a lag over from the month before when there was, whatever was going on, somebody, somebody stealing or water or whatever it was.
Definitely what I'm saying, that lock would've locked.
Been a, an overlap there?
I don't know, Chad's gonna bring it.
You ever say also? Check your meter.
Yes.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying that might be why it's high, because it could've been a little bit of overlap there from when it was red and somebody was stealing water or whatever was happening.
Then she gonna, you gonna, I'm saying, if I would've paid the fifteen, I would've paid you three hundred and eighty-five dollars, right? After the fifteen, I came to the meeting, right? And you adjusted my bill, okay? And I paid it, one forty-five, right?
One thirty.
Okay, I paid you, uh, one forty-five, I left on a couple horse for your son. He came and got it.
Uh, well, he gave me a hundred and thirty, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna say. Uh, that's what I paid on my, uh, water bill that, uh, last month, right? So now you coming back, you still order, you still charge me forty dollar late fee. That's for, cause I was late because I came to the meeting. That's how that forty dollars got there, ain't no adjustment in it. You adjusted my bill and I paid you one thirty, okay? So now this bill paid back there, she added forty dollars for late fee. Even though I was late, I was late because I came to the meeting, cause you adjusted for it. But you still added forty dollars for late fee. Because I just paid it on fifteen.
I think that was for the month before.
No, I paid it, it wasn't the late, uh, month before. I paid it on time.
But these late fee show up on the next bill, that's a problem. The adjustment also shows up on the next bill, so it's in the adjustments on the bill.
No, miss, you go. Sixty-three dollars for water, eighty-eighty-six dollars for sewer, add it up.
That is your current bill.
Yes. Now you got a forty dollars, thirty-seven, forty-three late fee. Uh, seven sixteen. Don't be shaking your head like that, that's not nice.
Talking to me.
Ms. Linda, if I add up the water usage of sixty-three, sixteen, the sewer usage of eighty-six dollars, the garbage usage of eighty, eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Sales tax.
And the sales tax of four dollars and forty-two cents, that comes out to one seventy, one eighty-seven. And because your bill was one twenty-eight and we gave them one thirty, there was a dollar and something left over, which made the bill one sixty-nine, ninety-seven.
Okay then, when I get home, I'll take that lock off. He come out here tomorrow and he put a lock on it. But the water has not been used at all from me and my grandkids up in the house.
So you want a lock on it now, ma'am?
He got it, which I get from house and take the lock off.
I know what I'm saying, tomorrow, do you want them to put a lock on it?
Huh?
You want them to put a lock on it?
I want him to put a lock on it.
Okay. And then, if you don't use it, then, well, you gonna have to call them to take it off now.
I mean, when he check it.
Oh, you wanted to put a lock on it and then check it, is that?
No, I want him to put a lock on it now. So when he come here and check it for the next bill?
Okay, alright.
He check it.
Okay.
And when I get that water, wait, I call city hall, oh, y'all come to this, that water, come take the lock off? And that way I can't use it.
Okay.
And then every time I leave, boy, I put a lock on it. We gonna do that every month.
You will also get that meter checked also, and see what's going on.
Check my meter, cause that meter been there fifty years. I'm fifty-five.
There's a lot of them that been there fifty years.
I'm fifty-five, but there's a lot of people got sewer and water before we did it. We had outside toilet. And we in the middle of town.
I ain't here to over you, and I've said, I'm a minion woman for you.
Well, I might have said that. But like I said, you probably had sewer and water before we had sewer and water.
No ma'am, not everybody else.
We were the last, probably out, sewer and water when I was kid. And that's no joke. We had outside toilet. So that meter been there ever since then.
We'll get it, tell you, we'll get it up there for you.
Thank you, Ms. Linda.
Take the meter off, and put a new meter. Because I can throw Chippewa, nine, three thousand, five hundred and ten dollars water, and y'all got, I'm paying eighty dollars in Chippewa. Now, run a toilet, a lot of money for, I got in the water. I want to go out with a gallon of water, huh?
She's gonna give you that information and call you, take it up.
Okay. And I want the minutes for last week, and I want the minutes for this.
You need to put it, uh, waste in with the city board.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Linda.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a picture of this morning on the block.
Number six, uh, Jan. twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-one, special meeting minutes. I had asked at that big table until I could listen to and see, I listened to the video. Um, the question was on number four. The wording of this, it, it needs to be changed, because that's not the way that the motion was made. It was very, the motion was very specific, it did say anything about the guys. The only comment about the guys was initially at the onset of the discussion. I believe Ms. Gwen, um, had, her question was basically, I thought we were doing one thing and we're doing something else. So, why that was put in here this way, I don't know, but I, I would like to see it taken out. Or either a verbatim of the entire meeting be done, if it's, it's just, it's not obvious. It's not in the context of the way the motion was put out there or voted on.
It says after a detailed discussion, council agreed to give the guys a raise because they work outside.
The guys is in quotation mark. I mean, I'm one council member, I think that at the last meeting, Ms. Gwen had taken the same issue with it. It's, it's not worded the way any of our minutes normally are. And given the circumstances of everything that's been said and going on, I think that it needs to be worded the way that it was, the motion invoked it on, or either.
The motion is mentioned at the bottom.
Okay, well, my opinion stands, this needs to be changed, in my opinion, or either a verbatim of the entire meeting needs to be cut out. That's where I stand. I don't know about the rest of the council, but that's my suggestion, there's a key change.
The fourth is clear. I agree with that. Never, never have I said mention or anything like that, if you go back to the committee meeting, I've never said anything referring to just the guys. I've always sounded being.
They were referred to as guys in the meeting that's why it was put in the minutes.
Who was that?
You didn't, Ms. Gwen.
I don't remember saying that.
That's the only. It was at, it was at the, at the beginning of the discussion, it was something along the lines of, what is, your question was, why are we giving all these adjustments? And that's not what we discussed, we discussed the guys, I believe, Ms. Gwen. At the beginning of the conversation, it had nothing to do with, was not said during the time that the motion was made or anything. And if you look at the rest of the, the items, they're all worded. That one is worded very differently from everything else. And I mean.
Well, I didn't understand what was in the rest of it.
Yeah, the guys, exactly. But, it wasn't in the context of the motion and, well, I'll just say, um, I, I'm not going to approve these minutes, as they say, and and we've already been put on notice. So, this is not what was said, and I'm not, I say it, it needs to be worded differently before it's approved, or either a verbatim of the entire meeting, before it's approved. Rest of the council have anything to say?
Alright, listen to y'all.
Alright, listen to the people.
Go back with it. I wanted, you know, to stay in what's said, you know?
Yeah.
When I have meetings, when I, uh, quote things, meetings, but the thing, the pre-coming, what's said. So, I had to listen to the, the meeting. I'm probably, uh, until later on. I wouldn't approve it either, you know, that's, you know. I got two council members saying, that's what's not said. I hadn't lived, listened to it. I don't remember Ms. Gwen saying that, if she did, like you said, it might've been at the first, but anyway.
Well, it said after a detailed discussion, agreed to give the guys a raise. And that's why we voted to give the guy a raise, you saying that's not.
Well, it was, it was outside employees that were voting on specific positions, not guys, cows, or men or women or anything like that. That, that was my issue with it. Can you, on the center, Chris? They're, they're online, I mean, you can go online and.
As long as I, you know, I can't hear that good, so it's a hard thing. Me and Ms. Gwen listen.
You can just go on our website and click on the meeting, and then you can fast forward or whatever to that section and listen.
And so we're just gonna leave it as is until then? Number seven, travel expenses, Jason wrote in, vehicle repairs.
Since I use my truck, um, my personal truck, and I get my new truck until January, I need tires for my truck. They're five hundred and, I think it's five sixty.
Five hundred.
It's, it's a little over five hundred. So I had to bring it before y'all, I mean, replaced it.
Now, I did have a question, and I, um, emailed the auditor, who said, um, for tax purposes, the mileage reimbursement includes the purchase price, fuel, oil, maintenance, and repairs of the vehicle.
What about insurance?
What then?
No ma'am.
What did you say then?
The mileage reimbursement includes the purchase price, fuel, oil, maintenance, and repairs of the vehicle.
All I do, all I do is mileage, all I do.
Jason, you got a lot of those miles, you got that you put on?
Every morning I get in there, I load it down, every afternoon, and then every day I get it through. I average about two hundred and ninety miles every two weeks.
Inside the city?
Yep.
On your truck?
Yep. I got, oh yeah. No idea.
Why? Why are we having to wait so long on the truck? I was told that it was an order issue, but it, the trucks that were put in front of us, that when we voted and all, I thought those trucks were there ready to be purchased.
They had to be ordered. And they're not accepting order by twenty-ones anymore, it had to be a twenty-two. Said the order should go in this month. Wait a minute, there were not, it should've been placed last month, I'm sorry.
I think it said January.
They said January.
He's in Florida? I'm waiting on twenty weeks right now, I mean, twenty, yeah, twenty months.
I mean, I've destroyed my truck, I mean, pretty much, I mean, but I mean.
So you're not driving your truck now, right?
Oh yeah.
Why? We only have two Ford 20s driving.
I have, I can't, I can't take Chad with me, when I do my own, I have stuff I gotta do.
We all were all, all using one truck before, I think.
Yeah, but it likely, when it was three of us, I had to use my truck. Like now, when Chad go to do something, I have to, still have to.
Go.
I still have to go to. And right now, I got wires showing in front of my tires, I mean, they been showing. I mean, I hadn't asked for anything.
I understand that.
I did ask for.
Well, we never intended we'd have to use this vehicle this long.
I didn't, I didn't think it was.
No, nobody thought it would be this long. The, y'all have the email from the, um, from Lee about it? And he says, mileage, for mileage purposes, and then he says it does not include, then he says this is the tax law, but then he says businesses can reimburse differently. So it is basically up to y'all whichever way you wanna go with it.
Yeah, he would just have to pay taxes on it, it would be in time if he would pay for it. Or, alright, it would be taxable and something, that's what we think.
Ah, problem is, it's something we gotta vote on, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is that a fit on the agenda? Number eight, budget and add more.
We need to set our budget for top. Ooh, God. We have to.
Supposed to start in September? Supposed to start in September?
No ma'am, we have to actually do a period in September.
Okay, that's right.
So we need to do it this month.
I'm wondering what's that?
Whatever's good for y'all? Y'all wanna keep it on Monday night?
Not Monday?
What's it?
Budget work top, Monday, five thirty.
What's the date on that?
August the ninth. August ninth, next Monday, five thirty.
So that's set for August the ninth at five thirty. Uh, number nine, ARPA funding options.
That's where I'd ask y'all about the, um, to look over, um, the options for that release funding that's coming in.
Which was the first package that you received.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
The book?
Yes ma'am.
The book, yeah.
The book.
And I would just add this caveat to it, that, that treasury hasn't released the final version of the rule on spending. So just keep that in mind, you know, as you're looking through it, that it, it is still, the rules are still subject to change. It's like, it should come out this month, though.
But this is what they've given so far.
That's in June, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The June twenty-fourth version.
Yes.
And also, it looks like we're actually be getting more than we suspected at the beginning.
More than the two ninety?
It looks like it's gonna be three hundred and fifty-three, six oh one. That's just a roundabout figure, it might not be exactly that much, but it, it'll be more than what we were first anticipating. That's just a roundabout figure, and I'm not exactly that much, but it, it'll be more than what we were first anticipating.
So has anybody thought about how y'all wanna do that? Because we, we have to have a plan in place by when we have to do our first report, September, September?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have to spend it by the end of September.
But we have to have a plan.
We have to have a plan in place.
By the end of September.
By the end of September.
And we can discuss that at the August night meeting if you want to. But I did have those, um, those options, the premium pay, technology, infrastructure, businesses, and citizens. And with the technology, um, we could actually do our vendor payer, vendor payments, ACH vendor payments, the nine-hundred-and-ninety, we could pay out of that. And then a hundred-and-ninety-five dollars a year after that would just come out of our budget.
Why are we using it for that?
Because we can.
Well, we don't have to.
We don't have to. But we can.
Well, that ain't something that we need to do. I mean, I thought you said we could do spend it.
We can do premium pay for the employees, technology, infrastructure, businesses, and citizens.
Well, that might.
We can do it all.
Um, we, on the infrastructure, and I didn't get to, to read the whole book to find out. But on the infrastructure, I didn't wanna find out if we could fix this, use that for our floor. Did any of y'all find that in the, in the book? Well, when you're doing some casual reading over the next week or so, could y'all see it?
So we can discuss this at the budget workshop, is that what I heard?
Yes, ma'am.
Just do your reading, say you're prepared. Yeah, we really, we, we gotta know what, what we can use it for, because we can do the pay, the infrastructure, the citizens, we, you know, those are things we touched on, but our first responders, we've already kind of agreed that we were gonna finish out what we needed for the fire department, too.
And speaking of which, y'all got a list of, of Christie's wants tonight as well. He's got lawn mowers, weeders, equipment.
Let me ask you something, Christie. I guess you got the money to put it.
No, he's on the line. No, it's something. It's, uh, there's some left in the budget, and there's some for the office.
Is that what this lane's list of.
Yes, ma'am. And that wolf, um, you'll see down, um, towards the bottom of this list, it says eight digital pagers for personnel only. One quote because they have a contract with them through the county. So they kind of have to use count.
That's for one pager?
That's for eight pagers. Five-hundred-and-eighty-five per pager, yes.
Oh, I see the eight now.
Yes.
Okay.
Very expensive.
Per pager.
So that needs to go in the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, now, if they do that, it does say if they do that before the end of September, they'll get a five-year warranty, extended warranty.
And he also sent me an email, or I'm sorry, a text with that, another quote for a Spartan RZC fifty-four inch deck is forty-three ninety-nine ninety-nine with a three-year warranty.
Now, I do wanna say Jason and Chad's trailer that they haul us up around on is kind of falling apart, so before we buy new lawn mowers, we need to look at all this stuff that the city, that the city has.
City needs.
Yeah. But I want the fire department to have all the safety, everything that they need.
Yes.
This, all the essential things.
When the weedy has to.
Yeah, I think I, I gave them one more here.
Okay, that was, uh, number ten, Chad, report council.
That went out, uh, this morning, checked on everything out at the, uh, community center, and how long has this hole been in the community?
Where is it at?
We don't even know.
What do you mean? You know about that. No, that's not the word. That's the outside of the building out here.
Is that where?
That's where we have it.
Yeah, that's where the lady is in the building.
Where I at? Where is it at?
It's. Yeah, that was the, right by the hedges out there somewhere.
Well, they run in.
Run into it. It's been there for a year now.
Did the insurance pay?
Yes, ma'am. I'm working with the engineers right now to get it fixed.
How long will that be?
I don't know, right there with somebody here.
I mean, it's been here, it's been here.
Are you working with them?
Yes, ma'am.
Indirectly.
Yes.
Through me to get you an architect, and the architect, and I think the architect's giving you a price at this point, and I think y'all are working out contract?
Yes, exactly. We're working on a contract.
For a year.
Speaking of that community center, the top part needs to be repainted, too.
Yeah.
Ealing, it looks awful.
Walk in there in the dark in the daytime and see how it holds, isn't that rough? We just spent eighty-seven hundred dollars to do it. It needs a new roof.